Call the Delaware County Commissioner of Meeting Monday, February 29, 2019, about 9:03. Welcome, and we will be the pledge, and Mr. Sheriff Skinner is going to do our honor thing.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Okay, no public hearings. We do have some appointments to the city and county council for people with disabilities. Mary Whaley and Brian Preston have both agreed to continue.
I make a motion, we appoint Mary Whaley and Brian Preston to the city and county council for people with disabilities.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
We also have need two appointments to the RDA board. I make a motion to for John Brooke and Courtney Clark to sit on that board.
I'll second.
Actually, there we have, you county has three appointments.
Yeah, we have three appointments.
And Brad Bookout, busy on.
Okay, I'll second your amended motion.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
No.
Ms. Reagan.
No. Okay. We have some table business, I believe we're going to leave all of those on, or do you have any?
The inmate for mental health services has been reviewed by the sheriff, and I've revised the contract, and I think I sent it to you last week with revisions in it, and I believe it's ready to go.
I make a motion, we remove the inmate mental health services from being tabled.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
I make a motion, we accept inmate mental health services contract.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Second. Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay, approval minutes, January 22nd.
So moved, second.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. And we have Brad Bookout, and Mr. Bookout said that he'd be glad to move his presentation to the end of the meeting in case anybody needs to leave. So we appreciate Brad doing that. Barry Ritter is here for 911 to give us an update on some things.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. Barry Ritter, Ritter's Community Services, the county's 911 consultant. Just wanted to provide you an update status on some items that I've been working on, but we've been waiting to hear back, probably first and foremost, is that the feds have notified the state that the federal 911 grant is open, and grant applications will be due the first part of April, so I expect that the county will be hearing from state 911 Board Office in the coming days for the application to be filed, and that would be for the replacement of your CPE, your customer premise equipment, your 911 answering equipment that needs to be replaced, and that your contract with your current provider expired a few months ago, and this board signed an agreement for a month-to-month operation until this grant process opens. As a reminder, that is a reimbursable grant, meaning that the county will pay 100% of the purchase price upfront, and then the state can reimburse you up to 60% of that purchase price, depending upon the dollars available to the state of Indiana, and how many applicants they have across the state. So that should be coming to call before long, I would expect. The other items is to draw your attention back to a report that I provided you last year as part of the findings in the operation of the 911 center, and the discussions that the county commissioners have been having with the mayor in regards to funding of the consolidated PSAP. Obviously, there's been notification from the city late in 2018 in regards to the obligations and the funding. Just a few points to draw to your attention, that consolidation is always sought for improved public safety response. That's the primary reason of consolidated public safety answering point. Second to that comes potential savings to the taxpayers long-term. Initial savings are not always experienced on initial consolidation if there are capital outlays that either you or the government needs to do, but I think that consolidation here in Delaware County happened long enough ago that the savings portion of that consolidation would be realized if studied. In 2008, the legislature first required consolidation, and they allowed to have no more than two public safety answering points per county. In that law, upon consolidation, the largest municipality can always start their own PSAP. So if the city of Muncie opted to dissolve the agreement with the county and start their PSAP, under state law, they're allowed to do that. They do not have to stay consolidated, but that is a decision left up to the city. The funding formula that is used prior to 2012, the county established the 911 fee rate on landline and VoIP telephones, and so councils would have passed an ordinance setting that fee on the landline and VoIP phones. With the onset of wireless technology, we were experiencing a drastic reduction in 911 revenue from landline phones. The national average was about 14% per year in loss. In Indiana, we were experiencing about 18% per year in loss, and local government was beginning to work in the legislature to find a resolution to that loss of 911 funds. That happened at a time when the rate for wireless 911 was set by the state legislature, and it was much less than what the landline rate was across the state, and more people were moving to wireless technology. The legislature in 2012, when they modernized the statute, they established a single fee, single point of collection. So it's in 2012 when providers quit sending money to the county auditor, and they began sending that to the state 911 board. That was the state's attempt to stabilize funding, and it worked. I was the executive director of the state 911 board at the time, and we stopped the bleeding at local government. They set the original single fee at 90 cents per device, so that would have been for wireless and for a wireline VoIP, and collected at the state. The legislature required that the state board establish a whole harmless or a base level of funding for every county. So what we did at that time is that we went back and looked at a three-year average of revenue and established that base whole harmless funding, and that's what you've received since that time, with the exception of there was an increase granted, I believe, in fiscal year 14 by the board. Each year, you receive an additional distribution from the board, what's called a 90-10, and that's the amount of money that's left in the state fund at the end of the year that they're required to distribute to each of the 92 counties. That is for 911 certs. Now, we all are aware that it takes more than 911 to operate a public safety answering point. So local government has always had a general fund liability to pay the offset between what you collect in 911 fees and what it costs to operate that 911 center. There have been several attempts over the years to increase the fee or request to increase that fee to reach 100%, but on average across the state, that 911 fee pays anywhere between 40 to 50% of your overall cost at the local level. The balance is your responsibility. The legislature made it clear, at my time at the state, that it's up to the local elected officials to determine how you pay that balance. You can do that from your general fund. You can adopt a local option income tax for public safety. If you are already operating under the public safety lowet or the cajet, and you have room in the cap, you have the opportunity to increase that, with 100% of that increase going to help offset the public safety answering point. You also have the right to do what you've done here in Delaware County, and that is enter into an interlocal agreement with another jurisdiction for them to help pay the cost of that center for the services that are received. I think the report that I provided you in 2018 illustrated that between city police and city fire, it was about 58% of the workload coming from that center. So that's a significant amount compared to the overall work that's performed. I don't believe that there's been any discussion at state level to increase the fee, but the emphasis has continued to be on local funding options. Across this state, there's been a great deal of conversation at times about double taxation, and I believe that the ELGF has spoken to that. There was a directive put out a few years ago in regards to the responsibility of units of local government, and how that could be addressed for that concern. The Delaware County PSAP is considered a large PSAP by its size and call volume, and carries a significant budget. They also have a significant workload, and if you look at that report and those numbers for call statistics, I believe that Paul Staff is in the process of completing the annual report. I would say that if it's like other jurisdictions, we will have seen an increase in the workload in that center in calendar year 2018. The interlocal agreement that the county has with the city, as you're aware, has a 12-month notice of termination, and you've received that. There is language in there that I would call the county attorneys' attention to, as well as commissioners', that speaks to the disposition of shared property, understanding that beyond personnel, your second largest expense in that center is your customer premise equipment and the contract that you'll hold with the system service provider. Historically, it's been AT&amp;T. If you sign a new agreement with AT&amp;T for continued services, you're leasing that equipment and you're leasing that service, and that equipment itself is not up for separation because you do not own that. That's another lease. So as we look at issuing a new contract with a service provider, that's something that we'll want to keep in mind. Beyond that, the other equipment, the computerated dispatch, the radios, I think we'll want to look at where those were funded from, and who paid the bill for those as we begin to establish an inventory, if we get to that point, for separation of shared resources. State statute speaks to your responsibility as the county for 911 services. You are required to receive the 911 call from all citizens in this county. We've had lengthy conversation, and I believe that your position is that you'll continue providing that service of 911 receipt to all citizens in this county. The legislature did not define the term relay. Now, Indiana being a home rule state, they leave it up to local elected officials to define relay, and how you choose to notify the first responding agency, sheriff, police, fire, EMS, from a 911 call for service, be that a voice call or a non-voice call, into that 911 center. There are services that happen in 911, which is the receipt of a 911 call, and then there are services that happen on the dispatch side. Those are two distinct responsibilities in that center, and there are services that you provide today beyond 911 to all first responders via city, county, township, or a town that go beyond and more statutory responsibilities. And as we looked at the center last year, and we looked at the workload and those responsibilities, if there were to be a separation at some point, that is an item that you would need to look at based upon the workload that would happen in a consolidated center that you have today versus the workload that you would have in a separated center beyond 911. And we can talk about that further, should we get down to revenue, it looks like that's going to happen, and we can define those dispatch responsibilities. So with that, I think that I've answered your preliminary questions that you had as to what your responsibilities would be and the funding structure, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Barry. Want to think over, have, has anybody ever, you've been in this line of work for some time, successfully done something as such as doing the relay?
It depends on what you mean by successful. You know that today, in modern technology and the systems that you have in place here with the computerated dispatch and the MBTs in the cars, a dispatch can be done electronically or by voice to the first responders. All of you have smart devices probably laying in front of you. Next-generation 911 technologies goes beyond voice. You heard me mention non-voice. Pictures, videos, telematics data from today's vehicles. The future of 911 is to deliver that data, that picture, that text, that video, to the public safety answering point, but then for that PSAP to be a clearinghouse, and that data to be sent on to the first responder, via the sheriff's deputy, to a fire truck, to the emergency room. To have access to that data at a PSAP, and then relay that call for service in a substandard technical setting, meaning a 10-digit line transfer, a voice call, you're diminishing the public safety response. It's not fair to the first responder, and it's not fair to the citizen that's seeking that assistance. So I think that we have to be really careful in, I say we, I mean you, I have to be really careful in determining what does relay mean for the citizens of the county, but how do you reach your fiscal responsibility in providing those services? And that's a huge discussion.
Well, I think that's important because the mayor has said that there will be no, the service will not be any different at the 911 center, and, you know, as commissioners, we want to try to provide the most efficient service to the citizens of Muncie and Delaware County, but if the city's not going to pay for their share, we have to look at other options. So I think that's important for the people to know.
Barry, we don't have to transfer non-emergency phone calls, right? Like dispatch does now?
No. You know, we spoke to the difference between receipt of a 911 call and relay. That would fall on the dispatcher's side responsibility.
And our dispatchers also, like, they take notes into the, to the computer system? Would we have to continue to do that for the city side, or we're just, all we have to do is relay the 911 call to them?
Do you have to relay?
The 911.
The 911 call?
But all other aspects that we provide now, we really wouldn't have to do, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. I know we've had several meetings with the mayor, myself, you, and Mr. Brooks. We've had one, three or four meetings with him.
Yes.
Would you like to have another one?
The last one we had, he got up and walked out.
I could reach out to the city attorney and see if they want to discuss this. Be happy to.
That's, that's fine with me.
I think that'd be a good, yeah.
And I know one of the meetings we looked at, because some counties and cities, they go by call volume, and I know we looked at some of that also, to where the counties was paying 30 to 40% and the cities was paying 60 to 70%.
Yeah, and that report that I provided earlier in 2018, there were different funding options that different counties used. Bartholomew County, for example, they fund their consolidated PSAP, they use 100% of their 911 fund distribution from the state, and then the balance of that budget is shared between the city and the county based upon call volume. And so those percentages, and I don't know exactly what they are, but the city's portion is higher than the county's based upon the call volume of city police and city fire.
And I believe you did watch some of the tapes that have been going around, and you clarified that we were within what we're doing, we're not doing anything double taxation. Correct?
I'm not going to answer that, other than to say that the ELGF has spoken to that, and in your structure, and the fact that you have an enforced interlocal agreement, I believe that you're doing things the way that they're supposed to be done.
Thank you.
I know one of the things that was said was we were taking money from the city through the PSAP. Is there any truth to that?
Well, you have to understand that in 2012, when the legislature modernized the statute, they began providing 911 service as a state program. So revenue is not remitted to the state based upon jurisdiction. So a local landline provider, or a wireless provider, or a retail establishment that's collecting on prepaid, does not report to the state that we collected X number of dollars from the jurisdiction of Muncie, or the jurisdiction of Delaware County. It's collected same fee statewide, sent to the state, and the state has a requirement that the board holds you harmless and distribute that revenue. So it's, it's not that you're taking money from citizens to provide a service, it's a statewide responsibility. And the reason that it's done that way is that in Indiana, the legislature believed that as the motoring public, if you live in Henry County, and you work in Delaware County, and you drive, you should receive a comparable level of service in public safety from 911, no matter where you're at. Likewise, if you're a citizen passing through the state, you're going to receive that same level of service, no matter where you are.
So we'll have John send a letter, then?
Yeah.
Be happy to.
Thank you very much, Barry, for coming.
Thank you.
Sherri? Could I give you a little history on that?
Sure.
My name is Ron Quakenbush, Delaware, like, 18 South 1 in Muncie, York County. Back in the 1980s, there were no joint communication systems in Indiana. The county commissioners, the mayor, the fire department representative, the police department representative, and a couple other people got in a van and traveled to Hamilton, Ohio, Hamilton County, Ohio, which is the first joint communication station in the United States of America. It started in 1946. We also traveled to Peoria, Illinois, saw a couple of centers there. It kind of disturbs me to see that we're getting criticism from the city administration when this was actually participated, and Mayor Jim Carrey had a very important part in this whole decision to do this together at the time. And we were unsure as to whether it was the right thing to do, but if you think when I'm saying this was done in the early 80s, 1983, 84, only in there when the decision was made to go together, I think just as a citizen of this community, I'm very disappointed that it's even being considered. And at the same time, during that time, the county commissioners put paramedics on the street, and that was a very controversial subject because that was going to cost a lot more money. Those paramedics were put on the street during that time by your board. City didn't have a thing to do to that, it was a state statute. Commissioners required to do this. Those paramedics served the city. Most of the runs from the paramedics are in the city. Those paramedics are dispatched by this communication center, as well as your fire and police. I guess I'm just being a bit emotional within myself here, but just for the general public to know, I was directly involved in the whole process as a county commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, and we'll move on to contracts and agreements. Mrs. Moyer has received some bids on these.
Yes, I believe we received two. I'd like to meet some for me. This is for the repairs for freeze number 63, 710, 850, last of the battery.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there are two bids here. First one is from R.A. Myers Construction Company, East Centalia, Muncie. Total lump, base lump sum quote about $107,462.107, total alternate number one lump sum quote, Second one is Hoosier Pride Excavating, Springport, Indiana. All right, total lump sum, total base lump sum quote amount, $66,100, 66,100. Total lump sum alternate number one, $8,778, 8,778, 100. It was a BOBO.
Can we make a motion, we take them under advisement?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay, the sheriff's salary contract.
Make a motion to table it for right now.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion? Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Ordinance for second reading, ordinance 2019-003, Delaware County Commissioner Ordinance for Juvenile Court Family Recovery and Report.
Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. This is that grant we received to help run the family recovery. This is that grant we received to help run the family recovery court out of juvenile court. It's kind of like drug court here, but it's to help the parents of the children.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-003.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, resolution for approval, resolution 2019-002, resolution approving a fixed amount of compensation contract with the sheriff of Delaware County.
That should be tabled. You should table that, because the process is, both the council and the commissioners have to adopt a resolution, and then approve, and the commissioners approve the contract, so you should also adopt, table the resolution.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Department heads and elected officials.
One thing I wanted to correct earlier in the meeting, is you had appointments to the Regional Development Authority, you didn't give it information, I don't know where it came from, I was doing the research while you were asking the appointment. Those appointments are four-year appointments. They're not annual appointments, and I think that all your appointments are within their four years. So it wasn't necessary to make any appointments in Regional Development Authority. 36-7.6-2-9 says that they're four-year appointments, and they can only be removed with approval of three quarters of the members that had signed, which would be you and this county and Henry County. So all the appointments seem to be appropriate, and seem to be within their four years, so you could just rescind that particular action.
Okay, make a motion to rescind the appointments to the RDA board.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Thanks for checking for that, Tom.
No problem.
Okay.
So I wasn't just playing on my phone, though, I was actually doing research.
Well, thank you. And we appreciate you keeping us on our toes.
I'm Quaken Bush, President, Delaware County Council. I think it needs to be said, Brad made a wonderful and great presentation. Brad and I have something in common. Originally, we were political foes, I guess you would say, but we both were kind of in the home building business as a profession.
For a long time.
And we were both put out of business by the economy in this community, and the home builders are struggling right now in this community because of lack of business. And so all the things that are being done really trickle down, as they say, but Brad has done something that he's been very humble and very quiet about, and I think it needs to be said. Brad reached out to a development entity that had brought business into Madison County to try to get some help for Delaware County. And in the process, these gentlemen took Brad to Indianapolis to meet with the company, and Brad went there to sell the old Delco battery site. And during that presentation, the water site was brought up. And Brad immediately gets his phone out and puts it up on the screen, and you can tell by the aura in the room that Brad had just hit a jackpot. And he did a wonderful job of following up. That property's in the city of Muncie. Brad Bookout had to back away, humbly he did, and allowed the city to have the project, which was their jurisdiction, but also take all the accolades along with it. And I think the public needs to know that if Brad Bookout hadn't have made that initial contact with the folks that helped Anderson get their water company and all that stuff, this would not have probably happened, because the Delco project was down about fourth or fifth in competition with several other communities outside the state of Indiana. So thank you, Brad. Let's give him a clap.
Yeah, Ron, I owe you lunch, buddy. No, thank you, Ron, I appreciate your comments very much on that. On my first visit to this company in Indianapolis, I knew that a large bond issue would be needed to attract this company. And I knew that the only way to get a bond issue done in this county was to run it through the county council. And so I called some elected officials, and I asked them to go. And the one person who could go on that initial visit was Ron Q. And we rode down there that day, and we had no idea what we were up against, or what we were running into. And it just worked out really good. So thank you, Ron, for your comments. I'm glad you were there that day.
Well, you did it, Brad.
We'll try to make more of those happen. But thank you, all of you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, my friend.
Okay. Under department heads, I'd like for the surveyor to step to the podium. I'm going to give him some accolades. And Tom, Tom Borshart, surveyor, let me see, you're starting your third year?
Yes.
Third year. And how much work he has done in the county. But we know spring is going to have some more snow, more rain, but could you fill us in on who is responsible for the cornstalks under the culverts? We need to stress this.
Well, typically, if it's a county-regulated drain, you know, I'll take care of it, the surveyor's office will take it, make sure all the drains are flowing, whether it's an open ditch or a tile underneath there. And with the cornstalks, it's always a battle, especially when you get an interrain in a day, and it just washes them all through there. As far as the other culverts, Angie can talk on that, but for the majority of the county-regulated drains, we will get people on. Like I said, we only have so many contractors that work, and they're busy all the time, so you know, it's a process to go through, but we will get the majority of the cornstalks out of there, especially if they're in a regulated drain.
But we want to stress that the homeowners.
Yes.
Many times, the people call in with issues, and they forget maybe fifty feet to the south or north of them, that there's a culvert down there.
And the majority of those culverts underneath the driveways and stuff, those are private culverts, and the homeowner needs to take care of that, because it's going to back up onto their property, on the neighbor's property, and so forth. And we just, you know, we're not allowed to come in and touch private areas, so it's on the homeowner to go ahead and just take care of their own part, and you know, everything's going to feel perfect, so.
We appreciate that. This does bring up a point, some of you might know that our director of planning, Marta Moody's in the hospital, or is she home? Have your Angie?
She's not in the hospital.
She's home. But we, she was paying to have all the drains underground certified. Has that project been finished yet?
You mean, put on the GIS?
Yes.
Yes, it's a work in progress. Because like I said, the majority of the county drains are put in over a hundred years ago. So you know, when you're pulling, you know, those drains have moved a little bit, he's working on them, he's got some of them on there, like I said, it's just a very hard thing to do, because you can't go out there and physically see them, they've been underground for a hundred years, and they've moved somewhat, you know. You dig them up and fix them, and you put them in the lower area, and so they've moved a little bit from what the original cards say from 1904, or whatever, you know, it was put in. But he is working on them in the GIS, and they're trying.
Because they thought it was only going to take two years, I think they're working into thirty years now.
In the county alone, we have eight hundred, over eight hundred miles of regulated drainage, whether that's open ditch or tile, so he's got all the open ditches on there. That was the main stuff, and now we're working on the bigger tiles and the branch off and go from there, so.
Very good. Well, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. Having weekly reports, payments of claims.
Make a motion to accept payment of claim.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
I'm sorry, I didn't state, it was $1,339,423.70 for the record. A lot of money. Okay, we're ready for the question?
Did you say yes?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
Motion carrying. Questions in the public, or any comments?
Commissioner, could I ask one request of you today? I know that Joe Retsch has reviewed an agreement from IDIM to allow about around $12,000 to be funded for a brownfield project in Delaware County. And I thought maybe that might be on the agenda today, but I didn't see it on there. IDIM does require a signature from the commissioner president to accept the funds, and if you wouldn't mind, I'd appreciate a vote to just authorize Sherry to sign that document. I know Joe can provide that later today.
I'll make a motion to approve the brownfield document.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Thank you. Sherry, I'll get that to you later today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark Commissioners, Perry Evans, 1270 North Delaware County. Thank you for a moment. I want to say thanks to Brad, just coming up here and listening to some things in the commissioner's office, you learn a lot about your community, you know, being a business owner in this community, it's cool, and seeing all these things that are happening in our county. Why I'm here today is, we've came a long way with the industrial farming, getting the ordinance put in, and learning, trying to make everybody happy, which it's hard to make everybody happy. But I think one thing that we could make everybody happy is a couple amendments. You know, one of them is just that, basically, the setbacks, you know, the property, just knowing that I'm the taxpayer of my property, I take care of it, I maintain it, I have to put up signs to keep people from coming on my property, you know, to remind them, it's mine, I pay for it, and then it could be used for a setback. Seems unusual. I'd ask the commissioners to look into that, I mean, it's been discussed, discussed the last meeting, a lot went on, there's a lot of motions, but I think there's a few amendments that could be taken care of, and just wrap this up, we've been working on it for, what, ten years now, and we have an ordinance, and if we could just get a couple more things on there, it would be great, I think really great for the community and landowners, to know that they own their property, that they're paying taxes on. Thank you.
Is that the setback from property line to property line, disposal, building?
Well, building to building.
Okay.
Structure to structure.
Okay.
I mean, the special use, we could go on, but the main thing is just the building to building. Just for instance, like my property, it just, it seems like I would never be able to, there's a chance I might not be able to use it to give to my family to build on, or anything someday with the structure to structures. Thank you. Please look into that, see if you can do something.
Thanks.
Kathy Chambers, 3601 West County Road 1270 North, Muncie, Indiana, 47303. I'm going to hit on the same topics. There was a very good article in the Sunday Star Press that a state professor wrote, his name is Bruce Frankel, and it hit on seven key points. Some weaknesses, some ways we could do better in our current CFO/CAFO ordinances. And one was what Perry just said. Property line to property line is not a fair way to allow citizens complete access to their own property. Site by site evaluations will protect citizens and the environment, not all sites are suitable. The setback to a public well is two miles. Why should private wells be different, only 500 feet? And going back to setbacks from property lines and building to building, EPA recommends a distance from CAFO to a home of 4,000 feet. 1,000 feet does not offer adequate protection as it is written in the ordinance. So Brad talked about quality of place, talked about expanding the cardinal, whatever way it's called, I had a loss for words. But, you know, yeah, those are all good things, but if we saturate, if we allow our county to be saturated with industrial farms, because our ordinances are too weak, it will just be a sad day, because some of those amenities will not be able to be enjoyed. So I ask you, how can we work together to amend shortfalls in this ordinance? Can we please move forward on some adjustments here?
I mean, to me, we have ordinance, it's in place.
Right.
And I mean, there's things, yes, maybe we can start looking into, and other things, but the main thing is, we never had an ordinance regulating anything for ten years or over. Now we have something in place, and like any ordinance, I mean, you can always go back and look at different things to make it better.
I agree. It's a starting point, it's a great starting point.
Right. And, you know, we passed ordinance, not only did you guys in your group send emails and everything, but also received emails from the farming community also, that I think one was, we were putting industrialized farming out of business in Delaware County.
Animal farming out of business.
Animal farming out of business, so you're right, we can't make everybody happy, but we are trying to do the best that we can.
And I think a lot of those emails, they were discussing the fact that the setbacks were too far. So you guys say they're too close, they say they're too far. I'm not interested in changing the ordinance myself.
Is it a possibility?
Anything's possible.
Do you say yes?
Anything's possible.
Okay.
And I mean, you know, it can be discussed and everything else, but I'm not, like I tell everybody, I can't promise you anything.
I understand.
All I can look into something, read up on it, and go from there.
So what would be the next step if we were to consider amendments?
It's just something we'd have to look into.
Pardon me?
Something that we would have to look into.
Okay.
Okay? But like I said, my main thing was, is getting some type of ordinance in place where we had some kind of regulations.
As I relayed the last meeting, the process is, whatever request from them still has to go through the planning commission, has to go through, and initiate the planning commission. Commissioner can make a request to the planning commission, the commission still has to consider it as they did before, and then make consideration as to whether they want to make an amendment or not. If they choose, if the planning commission chooses to make an amendment, then they have the public hearing, they make the amendment, they present it to the commissioners for final consideration. But it all starts at the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Okay. Anybody else?
I'm Robert Ray. I own property out in, by the CAFO site that's proposed. I think the inaction that we've seen for the last ten years on help to the citizens of Delaware County is something we did need to pay attention to. This CAFO will have 4.2 million gallons of oil sewage stored for a year, right above our aquifer, that we drink water out of every day. IDIM has told us they know they leak, so I don't understand how we can be totally ignored for ten years. The distances that this is allowed to occur around residences is way too close. We have people on our road who have mesothelioma, cancer, asthma, and several other problems, and the gases that can be coming out of here will affect them drastically, and there just is no reason why we can't adopt some rules that will help the citizens and protect them, the environment, and the air in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion recede?
I'll second it.
Motion carrying.